Good afternoon. This is a City Commission work session for the city of Largo. It is Tuesday, July 13th, and as we do all of our, our work sessions, we're going to start today with a business spotlight from a Largo business. Isabella, take it away.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and City Commissioners. Today I have the pleasure to have with us Eliana Center Manager and Mallory Quality Manager with BioLife Plasma Services. BioLife is an industry leader in the collection of high-quality plasma that is processed into life-saving plasma-based therapies. They have six Florida locations and will be opening up their newest location here in Largo at 2178 East Bay Drive next month, and will also be hosting their grand opening event on Saturday, August 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. With that, I'll go ahead and ask our first question. Can you tell us more about your business?
Thank you guys for having us here today. I'm Eliana, like she mentioned. We come from BioLife Plasma Services, so we are a national company. We have about 152 centers nationally, and we collect plasma. So our donors come to the center and they donate their plasma, and we compensate them for the time that they spend at the center. Currently, we're offering our donors $1,000 in eight donations, so it's quite a good money. Our motto is "Part Time That Pays Well," so that's awesome. And then we take that plasma that they donated and make medicines, vaccines, use it for research. Most recently, people have heard of plasma in regards to COVID-19, so we've been, we were collecting that plasma, using it for research to come up with the antibodies in the vaccines that they now have, which has made it possible for us all to be in this room right now, which is awesome. And Takeda is the pharmaceutical company that owns BioLife Plasma Services, and that's kind of who owns us, and they're the ones that kind of direct where our research and where our plasma goes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And so, why did you all choose Largo as your location? This is the first in the Tampa Bay area, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So we have a few out in the Orlando area, and we have one out in Lakeland. We will be the first out in the west side of Florida. We look to open up one in Tampa in the near future, one in Wesley Chapel, one in Clearwater, and one in St. Pete's. So we will be expanding pretty quickly. Those will be on the map within the next five years, so expanding pretty quickly. The reason why we chose Largo is, one, we got a great deal for the location that we're at, but we feel like there will be a really good donor base here, as this is a town of middle-class people. And that's usually where our donors come from, is people that need the extra money but also want to feel good about doing something good. And so donating their time to donating plasma and giving it, or it turning around and being used for therapeutic medicines makes people feel good. So we thought that a donor base here would be awesome to start out with.
Great. And so I know you all haven't opened yet your Largo location, but do you all have any challenges in your other locations or anything you've experienced so far?
Yeah, so in our other locations, a little different, as there's a lot of competitors in the area, whereas for Largo specifically, there are not a lot of competitors in the area in the plasma industry. We have like a BPL, a CSL around the area, but not as many. Usually around BioLife, we have about 15 to 20 competitors, whereas here we only have three to four. So versus trying to have our donors commit to BioLife and convert from whoever they previously have been donating at, we are experiencing the challenging, uh, challenge of educating the donors of what we do and who we are, and really trying to barb someone into letting us stick a needle in their arm and paying them for it. They're like, "What are you talking about?" But that's really the biggest challenge that we've had.
I know, I know. I get very nervous around needles, so. And our last question, what can Largo do for you?
That is a great question. I think one of our biggest and strongest, or anything that you guys can do for us, is really just talk about us in word of mouth and let people know that we're coming to the area, and what we do and why we do it, and for them not to be sketched out about what we do. Usually, that's usually the first thing, is they get sketched out what we're doing. So really just educating them. But it is really good for a good cause, and if there's no strings attached, it's your money. You take the money, you do whatever it is that you want with it.
Great, thank you. And so, again, they will be having their grand opening event on Saturday, August 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And for more information, you can feel free to visit BioLifePlasma.com. Once they do open, they will be open on Tuesdays through Thursdays from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Fridays and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And they can also be reached at 727-254-4427. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
How frequently can somebody donate?
Absolutely. So you can donate up to twice a week, so as long as you have one day in between. And we only take the plasma part of your blood, so we separate the blood from the plasma, and it's just the water-based part of your blood. So that's why you can donate so often, and of course, it's FDA-approved and all that stuff. So it is healthy for you, and it's okay for you to donate that much, as long as you stay hydrated. Any other questions?
Mr. Gerges?
This is gonna sound like a law enforcement question, because it is, and you have a representative from the police department here as well. Are you, you take walk-in or by appointment only?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm certain there are certain behaviors that you just assume not see at your facility?
Yes, absolutely.
So have you had any discussions with the, with the Largo Police Department and/or the Fire Department about what you offer and what you will not tolerate?
Yeah, absolutely. So we had a marketing tour about two months ago, so in May, and we stopped at the police department. We stopped at the fire marshal, introduced ourselves, let us know, let them know that we're coming to the area. We, of course, we're dealing with money and compensation, so our donors do get a little rowdied up when they don't get the money that they deserve or that they want or expecting. So there is a guideline and handbook that we have our donors go through, and they know what that behavior is and what's tolerated and what's not tolerated. And we do have like a little contact list by every telephone that has like the non-emergency phone number to the Fire Department, to the Police Department, as well as we've made those connections, so we have contacts there if necessary. We do have our own Takeda security as well locally, and if something happens that we feel threatened or something like that, we call them and they come and, what's the right word? Yeah, dispute anything that needs, is necessary, and they come on-site and they stay on-site if we feel threatened in any way.
Yeah, well, not just about prevention, but you also could be obviously a resource for, for certain folks that our Police Department, Fire Department come in contact with. So if you've, if you've opened those doors and made those connections, it's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure Joel, that guy's familiar with.
Absolutely. We even do, so we do something specific for first responders too, so we could just give them like an extra coupon. So usually we do like, before we open, we stop at the Fire Department and the Police Department again, and just give them cookies and thank them for their services, and give them coupons too, so they can come and donate as well and tell all their friends. One thing that we say-
Cookies and not donuts.
Absolutely. No, absolutely. We don't do donuts. That's too stereotypical. But yeah, the one ask that we do is just that they leave their firearm in the car, so there is not a chance of anything crazy happening, which they always get a little upset with us about, but usually they comply.
I'm sure they still will get upset about it.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
What's the process like if you are donating plasma? How long is it?
Yeah, absolutely. So we will be one of the first centers to open with what is called an Aurora Xi machine. So it's one of the fastest machines to donate plasma on, and it takes about 20 to 30 minutes. The initial process, we do say, it's a plan for about two hours for the registration process, but after that, it usually is a quick 30-minute. You come in, you get your screening process done, and then you hook up to a machine, you donate, and you're on your way.
Is it a two-arm process or one?
No, so initially, it's a two-hour process for the registration piece, but-
Two arms?
Two hour. Oh, sorry, one arm. I apologize. Yes, it's a one-arm process. We hook you up to a machine, and the machine, it works kind of like a dialysis machine, if you've ever seen one. So it takes your blood, whole blood cells, it separates your plasma and your blood cells, takes the plasma, gives you back your red blood cells, and it keeps going through that process until it gets to its targeted goal. Any other questions?
What are some of the effects that people feel after they have that done? I mean, is there like a, you know what I mean?
Risks? Yeah, absolutely. So they, usually people, we tell them to make sure that they're well-fed, well-hydrated before coming in. That's usually the biggest factor for anyone feeling any type of symptoms afterwards, but it is common to feel a little lightheaded, a little fatigue afterwards. But again, we do provide a full bag of saline, so 500 milliliters of saline at the end of your donation, so to help you replenish, because yes, we tell you to hydrate, but people don't hydrate. So we've taken it upon ourselves to make sure that you're hydrated before you leave, which is a little bit different than our competitors. Most of our competitors don't do that, so that's one of the thing, unique things about us. But we do educate you and tell you, make sure that you eat. We do provide you with snacks at the end of your donation to make sure that you feel good too.
I was just sorry, because I donated like 15 years ago, and I was like, "Ah, I'm never doing that again." But I was hoping by now, you guys have like perfected the process a little bit better, yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you for being here and welcome to Largo.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I'll see you all on August 37th, right?
August 7th.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Next, we will have a presentation on the Center for Alzheimer's Research and Memory Disorders Clinic.
Hello. I'm here to introduce the next presentation. We're gonna hear from Celisa Bonner, and she is representing the Madonna P-Tech Center for Alzheimer's Research and Memory Disorders Clinic, located in Clearwater. And this is at the request of Commissioner Gerard. And we have community development staff put together, the senior fact sheet attached to your memo. So we'll have that staff, Alicia Perrinello, will be available if you have any questions regarding the fact sheet. So I will turn it over to Celisa.
Thank you so much. Appreciate Commissioner Gerard having me. I, I'm Celisa Bonner. I'm a clinic coordinator for the Memory Disorder Clinic and Madonna P-Tech Center for Alzheimer's Research and on the Morton Plant Hospital campus. And there's also some other volunteer DCCI Task Force members in the audience from different sectors of dementia care. And we embrace the campaign that we're all in this together. We're not trying to compete against each other. We're here to serve our community and try to educate the community about being dementia-friendly and dementia-aware. I'm also the co-chair for the Dementia Care and Cure Initiative for Pinellas and Pasco County. And I think I have to hit enter for the next slide. Is that right?
The right arrow.
Oh, the right arrow, so, okay. So Alzheimer's disease has become a health care crisis. Florida has the second highest incidence rate of Alzheimer's disease in the nation, only behind California. In Florida, there are approximately 527,000 caregivers that are in the home, not professional caregivers, but their spouse or adult children. They provide 685 million hours of unpaid care, equalling to over $10 billion. There are over 580,000 known cases of Alzheimer's disease in Florida. You can see Pasco County has 600 and 200, 16,243 probable Alzheimer's disease cases. Pinellas County has 33,951 known probable Alzheimer's disease cases. By 2025, it's projected to increase by 24% to be 720,000 known cases of Alzheimer's disease. We might need to take a breath on That is enough to fill every seat in Emily Arena for our stats of Pinellas and Pasco. But we need two and a half stadiums to fill the, the known cases of Alzheimer's disease in our counties. Emily Arena holds 20,500 people. Our combined counties have a total of 50,194 known cases of Alzheimer's disease. This is a 2020 stat. This disease impacts all those who are connected to that one person with Alzheimer's disease, and this word picture really says it all. To carry the impact of this disease a little further, over 30,000 of them are gonna wander or become lost in a car or on foot because they are confused about their location at least one time in any phase of their disease process. But many of them are gonna wander or get lost repeatedly. So basically, that number's a picture of one and a half stadiums. So let's think about that, one and a half stadiums of those people are gonna wander and get lost. We have Silver Alert in our state to help somebody that's lost in a car as a result of a Largo resident who drove away from her assisted-living facility and never returned. But it's sad to say that Pinellas County does not have a K-9 Bloodhound Train Unit for scent evidence tracking. The closest unit is in Pasco County. I'm not here to push scent evidence, but I'm just here to provide education. The State Department of Elder Affairs provides this all across the state for any law enforcement for scent evidence tracking. I just, I brought one of these just so you can kind of see what that is. This scent evidence kit is good for five years for, yeah, you can open it and take a look at it. It's good for five years. It's really good for kids that have autism or adults with autism or different types of Due to the increasing amounts of dementia in our cities, our county, our state, the Dementia Care and Cure Initiative was created. It is the governor's statewide effort to become more supportive of the people living with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias, their families, and their caregivers. And that's the task force that we have in our counties that are supporting and educating the community. Next. Did it freeze? Looks like there's a Zoom thing that came around. Is Diane here?
It's not going.
Yeah, it looks like, and that's right, it looks like there's some kind of, somebody trying to get on Zoom. So I don't know what that.
I actually don't either, but I'll be pleased.
Okay, I'm just gonna continue on. So what is dementia? You keep hearing me say Alzheimer's disease-related and related dementia. So what's dementia? Dementia is not just one illness, but it's an umbrella term. I don't know what's going on there, so she'll have to check. It's an umbrella term for over 200 different types of illness that affect the brain, its capability to function normally as it always has. It's a comprehensive term for decline in mental ability, including memory, planning, or language. It is severe enough to interfere with daily life. Dementia is not by any means a natural form of normal aging, because it does not affect everyone. The dementias do share a common symptom presentation, but they're different based on their origin of cause. A diagnosis is made by a neurologist, the clinical assessment, a brain scan, comprehensive lab work, as well as neuropsychological testing. I'm just gonna come in here. Oh, that'll get you. Maybe do X-ray? Oh, I don't know. Maybe not. No, I can't see that. I don't want to hit it.
Used to be we had a flip chart.
You said K-9 scent, evidence.
That's Bloodhound, not any other type of blood.
Well, what's the cost of that program, or what, that, that?
Joel? Joel knows all the breakdown of the-
What's the cost of that?
That it should be donated first, the program. That's the cost of the maintenance or your bills.
Okay.
To me, it'd be amazing if, since Silver Alert started with Largo, that the scent evidence for our county would be started at Largo as well. I just want to plant that seed. Thank you guys for your patience.
Driving up to Chicago or wherever, Silver Alert's.
Oh, yeah.
By the time they found them on the roof, it was too late. I think it's the roof of the building.
We see them, we see them all over, all over the place.
Fun of technology.
Oh, yeah.
That's the fun of technology.
Lester was instrumental in that.
Really?
Oh, yeah. He was very passionate. Lester Arati, our former chief.
He's a full-time RV'er now. Sold everything, yeah. He bought a big Class 8 motor.
There's nothing yet.
Tell we, tell you, what, what's the early stage someone should start looking for getting tested?
Now.
Now, okay.
We do. Why not?
Make my appointment tomorrow.
Well, especially for baseline. Some people come to us because they have a family history, or the grandmother had Alzheimer's disease or, or some type of dementia, so they'll come to us just for a baseline. And so therefore, maybe you see signs and symptoms, 10 years from now, you're gonna have that data to see, "This is the actual function of my brain from my age and education at that level." So if I have changes, this is what it was before. And that's more comprehensive than just a picture and x-ray of the brain.
Okay.
So a diagnosis is made by a neurologist, that's a doctor that specializes in brain health, a neurologist's comprehensive assessment, as well as a PhD that does neuropsychological testing. And we do that in the clinic, and your neuropsychologist provides like hours of cognitive testing. So we're trying to evaluate the different quadrants of the brain to see what changes are in that specific area of the brain. Also, a diagnosis includes a, I'm just kind of giving some filler time, so a brain scan, and then comprehensive labs. Yes, primary care physicians do labs, but the neurologist is looking at specialized labs in relation to brain functioning. And then it's very important to get information from someone that actually spends time with that person, that sees their functioning, knows what their day-to-day entails, the changes that they have. So we put all that data together for a neurologist, for their diagnosis. And Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia. The word Alzheimer's carries a lot of stigma. I can just continue on. You don't have to really see the pretty pictures if you don't want to. The word Alzheimer's does carry a lot of stigma, and facing stigma is often the primary concern of the person living with the disease and their caregivers, just because of the misconceptions and the myths people have about the disease. So stigma basically exists because of lack of public awareness, education, and understanding the disease. We've also learned that the LGBT senior adult who receives that diagnosis has two types of stigma. Their diagnosis, as well as their sexual orientation. So knowledge yields understanding, which yields engagement, and we want our community to engage and embrace those living with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. Do we have the X part now?
We should have.
I had, I could've come prepared with some.
Can I throw you a question while you're waiting on that?
Yes.
You, you talked about the increasing numbers of cases in Pinellas County and surrounding areas, and what do you attribute that to? Increasing longevity, increasing elderly population? All these things?
Knowledge.
And undiagnosed cases?
Awareness.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And longevity as well. And we're seeing younger and younger cases.
Where, where do you, where are your numbers? How do you, where do you pull your numbers from?
People that walk in our door. We're state-funded, so we have specific, we have specific guidelines that we have to follow in counting everything. And so probably the youngest person we've seen with early onset, early onset Alzheimer's disease is based on age. Early-stage Alzheimer's disease is based on the stage or the phase of the disease. So the youngest we've probably seen is 42.
How old?
42, was diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, and she died before 50. That's a rare. Okay, great.
What would be the cause of that?
Yeah, we were just questioning.
We do not know what causes Alzheimer's disease. We just know how the plaques entangles, that's the, how it's, that's how the disease appears in the brain, but we don't know what causes it.
I imagine, I imagine that there's a lot of, there's a lot of resistance to getting baseline testing or to be tested because of fear of being, of being diagnosed.
In the, in the aged adult, in the senior adult, but not the younger. They, they're, they're aggressive. They wanna know. The, the younger population, they're more active and proactive and trying to, because they're the health, health-conscious, a lot of them. So they wanna find out what's going on. If they, even if they have any little change or concern, they're kind of hypersensitive to that, and so maybe they're diagnosed with thyroid disorder or sleep, sleep apnea. So, so the younger people are that come into the clinic, they, they more recognize and they wanna, they wanna get well, they wanna get treatment fast, so that they can kind of stay at all. But the fear does come with this more senior, senior population. So this is what I was talking about, the dementia is an umbrella term, and there's a lot of different types of dementia, over 200. The Florida Brain Bank has given us that statistic, that there's over 200 different types of dementia. And I know that we see some dementia in our clinic that there's no name for, and Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia. And I was talking about stigma. It's just a lack of education and awareness. So everybody undergoes normal decline in memory and processing as we age. I'm not saying you're gonna have dementia, but these are, there's multiple signs and symptoms of Alzheimer's disease that must be present to interfere with your daily life. These are some early warning signs of Alzheimer's disease. Memory loss that disrupts your daily life, changes in planning or solving problems, difficulty completing a familiar task, confusion with time or place, trouble understanding visual images and spatial relationships, misplacing things or losing the ability to retrace your steps, decreased or poor judgment, withdrawal from work or social activities, changes in mood and personality, and then new problems with words or speaking and writing. So this is a cartoon that's really good for education. It's called the Five As of Alzheimer's Diagnosis. You need to have two of these five As to be diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. In this cartoon, you're seeing a woman who's not completely dressed. She's writing a letter with her shoe, and she has a flower pot on her head. Anomia and aphasia refer to impaired communication. Anomia is when someone has word-finding difficulty in speaking and writing. The person knows the item that, that they need, but they cannot find the correct word to say it. So this led, this woman has forgotten the word of letter-writing. And I'm gonna give you a little bit more example about that. Let's say you call your mother and you say, "Hey, Mom, what are you doing?" And she say, and she says to you, "Oh, I'm putting marks on these sheets." And you're like, "Uh, what?" And she replies to you, "I'm putting marks on these sheets." And you're like, "No, no, Mom, stop what you're doing. Tomorrow, I'm coming to do your laundry. I'm gonna change your linens. I don't want you to ruin your sheets." And she says, "No, I'm not doing anything wrong. I'm putting marks on these sheets." She can't communicate that she's writing a letter. So anomia affects our words or language in verbs and in nouns. So anomia affects our words or language in verbs and in nouns. Aphasia is when somebody has problems in understanding what is being said to them, and also problems in expressing their thoughts with words. It also may affect their ability to read or write. And in later stages, speech may become impossible to really understand. So therefore, the person cannot interpret what their caregiver is trying to tell them to do. The vast majority of people with Alzheimer's disease really, um, do not have, or not really affected too much with aphasia. It's more amnesia, which is memory loss. And then there's apraxia. That's the loss involuntary motor skills. So the brains and the muscles, the brain and the muscles, um, cannot communicate, or they have a, a disconnect in communication. So they're not able to perform just a basic task of activities of daily living, like dressing, bathing, toileting, or grooming. Um, and that, they also have a high risk in falls, whenever you have some, um, um, apraxia. Here, the lady, she is not completely dressed. She has the physical ability to dress herself, but she's had a disconnect with her brain and her muscles to not complete the task. So she's just half-dressed. And that's apraxia. Agnosia, that's the loss of the ability to recognize an object, a face, a voice, a sound, or even a place. So not only do they lose the ability to name the object, they lose the ability to know what its use is for. So here, the woman, she is, uh, writing a letter with her shoe instead of a pen. Maybe while she was getting dressed, she needed to brush her hair, but she grabbed the flower pot that was sitting on the shelf in the bathroom and put that on her hair, instead of using a hairbrush. She saw the flower pot and knew she needed to brush her hair, but she did not recognize that the flower pot was not her brush. So that is agnosia. And then amnesia, that's what we're more, um, familiar with. That's memory loss, that's usually the first symptom that's noticed. And people have problems with short-term memory, and then over time, it's long-term memory. And maybe they don't even recognize information about themselves, or don't know information about themselves, or even their loved one. So after all these As that are affecting a person with Alzheimer's disease, they also have a decline in their judgment, their reason, their attention, their concentration. So that is what is going on with one person with Alzheimer's disease. I think we need to take a breath. That's what we say in our support groups and our caregivers, it's time for us to breathe. That's just a lot of information to take in, but to also, uh, realize what's happening. It was announced in June that there was a new treatment for Alzheimer's disease, but the FDA recently updated the label for, um, for Adulum to say that now it's indicated for treatment for MCI, which is mild cognitive impairment, which is not a dementia, and early-stage Alzheimer's disease. Because that's, in the clinical trials, that's who they used, um, for this treatment. So I just wanna kinda give you that little nugget. And then, so how can you help? Educate, educate, educate. Provide ongoing training for yourself and for your staff. You never know when you're gonna be personally touched by someone that has this disease, or you're gonna encounter somebody in the community with it. Be aware of who you can contact for a needed resource. And then communication, that is key in everything. Learn how to communicate with somebody that has Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. I always wanna, um, give a shout-out to the emergency management teams and the special needs shelter teams, because they provide an amazing service to the twelve thousand residents with Alzheimer's disease that are in an evacuation zone A. They have to evacuate, and they have Alzheimer's disease. In our clinic, we keep up with, that's one thing I look at in their address. Where are they located? If they're gonna be diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, what is their plan? Twelve thousand. And then, this is, um, these are logos of participants that are volunteering to be part of the Dementia Care and Cure Initiative in our counties. And, um, they are the experts, and we're all in this together to make sure that our, our community's, um, dementia-caring and dementia-aware and dementia-friendly. Any questions?
If we go back to, to the increase in Alzheimer's, uh, over, you know, by twenty-twenty-five?
That's four years.
Yeah, that's a twenty-four percent increase to, what's the total number in Pinellas County?
Right now, we have five hundred and eighty thousand, but in twenty-twenty-four, it'll be seven hundred and twenty thousand. Now, that's not the state of, um, that's not, um, Pinellas County, but the state of Florida.
In Florida, what, do you, do you have numbers for Pinellas County?
For Pinellas County, there, it's probably gonna be close to fifty thousand. And right now, we have about thirty-four thousand. That's twenty-twenty stat.
So what would your recommendation be as, for a city? For, you know, for the, us here to prepare and be ready for them? What kind of services do you recommend? Or, you know, or, you know, what are your thoughts?
Transportation options? Almost every day, we tell someone they can no longer drive. I report people to Tallahassee every day that they have to discontinue driving. Transportation options, that's gotta be key. Um, also, vehicles of service to track them when they're lost on foot. We have Silver Alert, um, if they're lost in a car. But how do you find them if they're lost on foot? If they're lost on foot, yeah, they can have the GPS tracker on them, um, which is the GeoBit. They can have their cellphone, but they have to have that. They have to have that on their person, it has to be turned on. So how can you find them if they're lost? And that's very stressful for a caregiver. There's no, there's so much research that's been trying, that's tried to determine, when is somebody gonna wander? There's no, there's no, oh, if this happens and this happens, then they're gonna wander. They wander, they're just gonna wander. There's, when a person wanders for the first time, they wander for the first time. Our caregivers say, or people that come to the office, "Oh, I don't think they'll ever wander." The key word is "think." You know, think they will, because they don't display that behavior. But they're never gonna wander till they wander for the first time, and there's nothing to predict it. They may have had a nap and woke up, "Oh, I gotta go, I gotta go run to the school, go pick up the kids." And they don't find their car, so they're just gonna walk to the school.
What about caregiver support?
Caregiver support. Funds for respite care. Respite can be for, and maybe their loved one goes to assisted living for a, for a week, so that they can go away for a vacation. Or, um, for, provide services for adult daycare. So any kind of, um, financial resource to pay for that. Because a lot of people have had to quit their job to take care of their mother and their home, because the mother doesn't have long-term care insurance. And she doesn't be, and she's not eligible for Medicaid, because she falls in the cracks. She makes twenty dollars over, so she's not gonna be eligible for Medicaid, for long-term care. So there's a lot of people that are in those cracks. So financial resources to help with in-home care. We, um, as part of the Alzheimer's Disease Initiative of the state and the memory disorder clinics, we, we, every year, we, um, encourage the governor to increase funds and slots for home care through the Area Agency on Aging. And there's just a waiting list, and he's aware of that. So he's, he's an advocate and ambassador for Alzheimer's disease, so he has provided more funding for, for care in the home. So basically, you're trying to have care in the home to prevent long-term care. The longer a person can stay in the home, that means the caregiver needs to have access to some assistance, whether it be, um, somebody helping them with a bath, or cleaning their home, or running errands, or things like that. So that's what we're trying to do, is prevent them for long-term care placement. Really, only twenty-five percent of people diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease and related dementia are in facilities. So you can just drive around Pinellas County, there are a lot of facilities. So that lets you see how many people are really being provided for care in the home by their loved one. We already said, what, ten billion dollars? For the, just the state of Florida. So we need to empower caregivers with help, which is really a financial resource to pay for additional, additional care in the home.
What's the typical timeline of progression for somebody that has Alzheimer's? And has that changed in the past ten or fifteen years?
So one person with Alzheimer's disease is one person with Alzheimer's disease. If you're diagnosed, she might last three months. But the, if she's diagnosed, she might last twenty years.
Okay.
Everybody, everybody's different.
There's not really a typical at all, then?
Even early onset, which is based on age, sixty-five and under. The stat used to be three to five years, well, my mom was diagnosed at fifty-nine and died at sixty-nine, so she beat that stat. She, upon diagnosis, she still lasted ten years.
But you're saying, excuse me for just continuing jumping in, but you're saying that historically, early onset would be, uh, you know?
It would be less than five years, after diagnosis.
Well, that, that breaks my heart, because I have a very dear friend, uh, whose wife has early onset, so.
But that's just-
It just breaks my heart.
Right, it, it's terrible, it's a terrible disease. It's a terrible disease. Um, some people live twenty years with a diagnosis. Everybody's different. I mean, we're all different, all of our medical history, everything's different. One person is one person with a disease. Well, and sixty-six percent, maybe it's sixty-seven percent, um, of caregivers pre-decease, their loved one they're cared for with Alzheimer's disease. So then there's the person with Alzheimer's disease without a caregiver. So we always encourage, what is your plan if something happened to you? What is the plan? "Oh, I don't have a plan," oh, no, you need a plan, because you don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring. So you have to plan. You have to, we try to get them to think about crisis intervention now, before the crisis happens.
Well, one of the reasons why I was so impressed, and I asked for you to come, uh, and do, and present here today to the commission is because, as you were presenting your numbers, and, you know, and the impact, and all that, I was thinking about the social impact, you know, in our community of this increasing aging population and the increasing incidence of dementia and Alzheimer's. I don't know if you have any studies or any projections on the social impact. I know you were talking about this, but has anybody looked into what that's going to do to the community at large, or what the impact is going to be on the community at large?
Have to get back to you. Have to get back to you, to see if there's, if the state has done, if the Department of Elder Affairs has done. Because that would be based on probably citywide and countywide, because every city's, is defined different.
And I don't know if anything's been done here, but, you know, in Pinellas, or, or whatever, because, you know, it's not just the, it's not just a person suffering from Alzheimer's, it's all the people that touch it. Right?
So that's what DCCI is about, the Dementia Care and Cure Initiative. We're trying to educate every sector in the community. Um, restaurants, grocery stores, ha, if they encounter someone with Alzheimer's disease, so that they educate them, so they can recognize that, and then embrace them, so that they can continue to, um, function in the community. We don't wanna say, "They can't do that anymore, they can't do that anymore, they can't do that." What can they do? We have, we have to adapt, so that they can continue to be, um, independent. So we have to make those adjustments. They don't have control over their adjustments, or their changes, so we have to be the one to change. We're trying to embrace them in their phases of the disease process. It, it's, it's a lot of work, it's hard. But it's, it's someone's mother, or sister, or spouse, so it's worth the energy and effort.
Has DCCI, uh, reached out, or maybe looked at, uh, the Pinellas Co-op, uh, library system? And since we, kinda, the library system seems to touch a lot of, of different people, um, maybe in trying to get educational resources out to them, maybe there's a resource there that they can offer to y'all to, to get that information out to the family members?
So we have spoken in different libraries in different communities. So we're, I mean, the options are endless. We, whoever has a connection can get us connected with them, and that's how we can provide some more education. We're willing to do anything, go anywhere, share education.
We have the Pinellas, you know, uh, Library Cooperative, so. Yeah, one, one contact can get you into all the libraries here in the county. Right, Mike?
Yes.
Michael Smith, okay, remember that.
I had a couple, just a couple of questions about folks that wander. Um, you mentioned, uh, it's the scent kit and the GeoBit. How, how frequently does that happen? Were, were people in Pinellas County, let's say, wander on foot, not in a car?
So, right now, so I'm the contact for Pasco-Pinelis, um, for Silver Alert, so I follow up on, with law enforcement for all those Silver Alerts. There's not a program for lost on foot. I don't receive any data of anybody that's lost on foot.
So we don't, we, so we don't really know?
We don't know.
Okay.
We don't know.
Um, and, and the, the GeoBit is, is just like a bracelet, or a wristlet that, that's, or anklelet, I guess, that's worn all the time theoretically?
Right.
Okay.
It has to be charged.
Right. Oh, okay. And, um, and then, the, in the county, did you say Polk County, or Pasco County?
Pasco and Pinellas.
I'm saying that has the scent kit now, that has a scent handle.
Pasco has it, as well as Hillsborough County.
Okay. And so, so, um, how are those kits kept? Are they kept at the person's home?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then if somebody goes missing, they say, okay, here's a, here's a scent kit? And, okay.
May I ask it?
Sure.
Add on to that question. How did, how are they distributed? Can you co, can you contact that company, or do you guys distribute some stuff like that?
The, I have hundreds of those in my office. Law enforcement has those, actually, I don't know if Pinellas Law Enforcement has it, because they, it's futile, because they don't have a- Pasco Law Enforcement, they provide those. I can, I can get as many as you need free for the, for the person that needs it.
Why do you say it has to be a bloodhound?
Because German Shepherds, they, they, we can maybe, I don't, do you wanna answer that question? Come on, come on, Joel. You already gave me some education about that, so. Let's let Joel, who's the expert.
Uh, just, uh, yeah, I'm in the commission. Uh, the bloodhound has a, a more advanced scent-tracking ability, just with their prolonged sense of, uh, ability to track, you know, cars, and things like that. They can pick up that scent and carry it for a long distance for a long time. It's a lot of tracking.
They don't get distracted by other stents.
Alright, any other questions?
I just, I would just say thank you for what you do. And in my experience, uh, public awareness and, and, uh, education is most important, because the call goes out as someone in the public encounters a disoriented adult, which can be anything, the whole spectrum. And you, as you said, it's an umbrella term that you're trying to focus a little more awareness on here. And, um, discussions about things like a, a bloodhound would probably, I would guess, Joel, more for a, a regional solution, like perhaps, it would be something available in Pinellas County that the law enforcement agencies could share. Because I, for the number of calls that would go out, say, for example, in the city of Largo, I don't know that you would have a, a blood. Usually, when that happens, it's a, it's a canine officer that has a bloodhound at home that they go get and bring in for that. So, it, when it, when it works, it works great, but.
So, kinda to add on to that as well, it started getting me thinking, well, I mean, if, if, you know, just looking at the numbers that you showed at the beginning of your, of your presentation, um, you know, obviously, Pinellas County has quite a few more than, uh, you know, uh, cases than, than, um, Pasco County, and, and it would make sense. Obviously, yeah, and I don't think Largo necessarily, maybe, you know, we don't need to go down the path of, of purchasing a bloodhound, but I think, we, what can we do here, this commission, to advocate to the sheriff, or whatever? Or, I'm assuming it would be the sheriff to help you guys along with that process. I mean, it seems like it would be something important for us to have here in this county, a, a, a good resource or tool for us to have.
Most definitely, and we even have more cases in Hillsborough County, and Hillsborough County is a large.
Yes.
Is just, Joel? So there's a leader task force that's law enforcement, Alzheimer's disease, education in response. Uh, maybe to have a representative of this, of this, um, commission, this group, to, um, speak with that task force, to see what, what specifically can this group do to help talk with the sheriff to, to get that information, to say, hey, this is what we need for our county? Because our, we're not providing that service to our vulnerable population.
Joel, are you on that task force?
Yes, sir, I am. Currently, I can just speak for what Largo Police Department currently offers. We have, uh, safe kind of tracking devices, uses, uh, radio frequency technology to pinpoint, locate somebody. We actually have a lot of braces that we turn out to community members. A lot of our S.I.D. braces. So we have a program in place currently for our police department.
Alright, we'll, we'll, I'll talk you off-line.
Jamie, it might be, um, as far as a group that gathers the, the, um, Pinellas Police Standards Council, um, it's the sheriff, the state attorney's office, the chief judge, and all, and all the chiefs. So if a presentation like this were to be made to that group, they might get behind, you know, it's more of a county-wide or regional discussion or solution.
How could we, how could we follow up to know, to arrange that type of presentation?
Joel could ask perhaps Chief Undestead, who is on that council?
Okay, great. Okay, great.
I'm not giving any direction to one, sorry, I'm just making a suggestion.
I think it would be important in that presentation or that talk to know how frequently the bloodhound is used in Pasco and Hillsborough County. Hillsborough County has more people than we do, Pasco has less, so we should get a pretty good guess at how frequently this would be able to help people out.
Yeah, you know, a history of how many calls have been made for that.
And just to follow up, I definitely want to help where I can with the, working in the library system, I think, could help, and with the co-op where we're all in one, I think that would be a great resource to maybe get the information on, maybe get your kits out to help where if they need classes or a library and can help, you know, distribute them or do programs, because libraries are always looking for ways to get out into a community and get resources out, so maybe, and I'll give you my card and see where we can follow up on the library system here. But also, have y'all reached out, you talked about LGBTQ community, have y'all reached out to Metro Health in Pinellas County?
That one.
Metro Health? Okay, and any way I can help with that, because I'm in contact with a lot of their executive directors and members, I can help with that and make contacts and see where we can.
There's a subcommittee of better leading seniors in Pinellas County that oversee the LGBTQ, so that one of them may be in contact with that, so I'll double check with that.
Yeah, and I'll give you my card, and I would love to help where I can with those contacts.
That'd be good.
And like I said, we're always looking for ways to get into the community in a way that, you know, libraries are there for, so, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for all that you do, and we're always looking for better ways to serve our community, so this is a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will talk about COVID communications, hopefully waning.
It's good, I promise.
I have an umbrella, if anybody wants to rent it.
Thank you all for having me today. My name is Lauren Fatkin, I think I know most of you, but I don't know if I met you before, Commissioner Gerard, but I'm the communications strategist with the Communications and Engagement Department, and I'm looking forward to sharing with you an overview of the COVID communications plan. We had created this overview to recap our successes and obstacles and challenges, as well as how we had gotten through those challenges through a very weird and challenging year, I think we can all agree on that, but, sorry. There we go, okay. Yeah, so we wanted to provide this to you all for, to show how we kept team members, as well as the community, engaged and connected to our city services while we had the stay-at-home orders, as well as how we kept them connected and engaged during the time that we were returning back to facilities and office. So here we have the communications plan overall. It highlights the importance of consistent messaging in coordination with Pinellas County, surrounding cities, PIOs, or Public Information Officers, and other emergency officials. We, anything that we were putting out, again, had to be coordinated with the county, as well as CDC, DOH, State of Florida, and we wanted to make sure that our messages were focusing on community resources, city and health services, and business resources. And because so many of us had to pivot to that work-at-home environment, we had to start thinking, well, how are we going to get this information out there now that, you know, our facilities are closed, or we're not having in-person events anymore? So we started to really think into more increased virtual content, doing a lot more multimedia, a lot of digital messages on our LED boards, on, you know, at our parks and facilities. When we were open again inside our facilities, the print and digital signage that was there. And to make sure that we were connecting with everyone in our community, we wanted to make sure that our messages were ran, you know, on largo.com and largo today, or largoTV, excuse me, and largo today. And some newer things that we did were webinars, virtual meetings, like we have, well, I guess this is kind of a hybrid meeting, but surveys, e-news, we tried to switch it up a little bit more when we were sending out messaging, social media, phone and text, so really just trying to find any possible way that we have, like go through that to-do list, make sure that, or that checklist, to make sure that we were able to reach our audiences. And then finally, to connect both our internal and external audiences, we try to focus on strategies to share information, create engagement, and generate input, which I'll show some examples in a little bit. So building off the previous slide, as you see here, the primary goal of our main objectives to this plan were to keep team members in our community connected, informed, and engaged to vital city services and resources during our stay-at-home orders. As I previously mentioned, the messages focused on those business resources, city and health services, and return-to-work details for team members. So how do we do this? Thinking back to the innovative solutions, the virtual meetings and the webinars, especially internally, the webinars had a lot of value, and they still do now, for team members, it was a really great way for any team member to be able to connect with city leadership or know what was going on. Virtual programs and events, increased use of our dynamic content, facility signage, our LEDs, I have to say that the team members on the communications team, as well as the library too, for their digital displays, were really great on making sure that content was ready and live to go as soon as we knew what it was, or what it had to change, I should say. And we really tried to, to have the continued support and build with team members to help build community pride through such a, you know, weird and weird time, I guess, really. I mean, we wanted to make sure that our community, we still knew that we were caring about them and were focused on them, as well as internally as well. So in addition to some of the traditional strategies that we had, we were able to add a few new tools to our toolbox, such as, again, the webinars, virtual events and programming. Now we're able to have those more, like we're doing a lot more live streaming, even though as we start to go more in person, but during the time, it, like the virtual, I think it was the Easter Bunny or Breakfast with Bunny was probably one of our first events that we did, which got a lot of interest. The Mayor's Coffee Chat, which went to virtual, which still goes that way today? Yeah, so, which is great, because.
Actually it's live.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, just trying to think of different ways that we can, we can keep our community connected and provide services to, to our team members. So the next couple of slides are just some highlights from both of our audiences. So for Team Largo, we would, on average, had over 3,000 hits to our Team Health internal website, and we had an average of 178 residents to Team webinars. We were trying to make sure that, you know, anything, again, that we wrote update would be presented, either website, e-news, text, so that way they could find information easily. Creating engagement too, we tried to really focus a lot on mental health, doing things, even though we were apart, to, to have some fun. Happy hours and yappy hours, we did one on Zoom, some with drinks, some with dogs. We did virtual paint parties and some interactive webinars as well. One of the big things that helped during COVID was we had set up a, established email address, so that way, just a generic catch-all for team members to be able to submit questions, which has, you know, been a really great direct line of leadership since then. Also, the staff survey that we had put out there to help, you know, figure out where people were feeling right when they were starting to pivot to remote work. And so moving on to our community, like I had listed before, web e-news videos, we started a lot more of those Valepak mailers, those are the mailers that you get in the blue envelope. We had started putting those out just as a different way to hit a lot of audiences at once. There's a lot of zip codes that those go to, and they were a good mailer, you can scan it, and they would send people over to ways to connect with city services or sign up for Our videos were really well received, and not only did it help our social media followers grow, it also helped with the engagement in the community, helping us to build, helping to build trust as we were presenting, you know, the messaging from, from the CDC in Pinellas County. So one of the biggest things that we noticed during COVID was the increase of subscribers that we had gotten to our weekly e-news, it went up 448%, and those people were, you know, now we're able to reach them, Largo residents, and they're receiving emails now every week that we hadn't, you know, hadn't had the opportunity to touch them before. Again, creating engagement within the community. Fourth of July Parade, which I think most of you were there last year, and the live stream, it was really interesting to see how that was received too, for the people that weren't comfortable coming out yet, they just sat and watched, and, you know, watching the people that were there, and it was, it was really, it was really great to experience that. CPAC did some really great digital live streams on Friday nights, the K-9 video for the Great American Teach-In, the kids loved that. Safe Holiday Promotions and virtual programming, all different things that we were trying to really get creative and find different ways to keep connected and engaged. And like I mentioned, the Mayor's Coffee Chat, another thing that the library had started was a live chat on their website. We had never put one on largo.com before, but to see it on the library's website, they found a lot of value in that during initial stay-at-home orders, they were able to quickly field questions, and it gave our team insight, should we ever want a feature like that, of the benefits, outcomes, and challenges for live chat or a chatbot. So some of the outcomes and key takeaways that we noticed as a team, enhanced support for regular Team webinars, which our team members do a great job, as well as working with everybody that participates in those as well. Virtual hybrid, internal and external meetings and events and programs. Team engagement in a flexible workplace was an interesting challenge at first, but it was also a good, positive challenge. We were able to work through that and continue to do that as we're moving forward and, you know, more of that hybrid model. Making sure digital signage was consistent with anybody that was putting it up, and the messaging, and that was up there frequently, and then keeping our digital communications So with that, as I said in the beginning, that there is some really great news, actually, from, I don't know if I want to say from COVID, but from our COVID communications, part of this, or, excuse me, right before we had presented to administration with this presentation, our team had found out that we had won a platinum award from the Hermes Creative Awards, and they are, excuse me, they are an international competition for creative professionals. So it just kind of highlights, not even just our team, but all team members that have, you know, worked really, really hard during such an interesting time, and making sure that folks were staying connected to city services and staying engaged. We, yeah, so we wanted to share that as well. With that, that's all I have, and opening up for any questions or thoughts or anything like that.
Can I, man?
Please, yes.
So, well, first of all, congratulations on, on the award, I was trying to find it. I knew that you guys had won something, I'm glad you brought it up, because I was searching like crazy trying to figure out what it was, but, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Well deserved for you and, and your entire team. I, I would just like to say, though, as, as, you know, obviously a resident of Largo and, and, you know, kind of working here, I guess, it was very, it was great during the last year to be able to go on just about any platform and find out the information I needed to find out about what was going on in our community. And that was not the case for a lot of other places, from the state to the federal, to the, you know, so what, you know, the information that you guys had and continue to put out is fantastic, so.
Thank you.
So, thank you. No, thank you, I mean, it was very, I, I know that I, you know, talked to a lot of people over the last year and a half, that, that took a lot of, you know, assurance from that, because it was very easy to find, it was, it was, it was constantly updated, the information was reliable, and, and again, that's, that obviously was not the case, you know, and for a lot of other sources of information, so I personally want to say thank you to you and the entire team for everything that you guys did for that last, and that, that award is just, you know, I hope gives you guys a little bit of pleasure as well, so congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I just echo what the Vice Mayor said, during the whole ordeal, it was really comforting and nice to have that open line of communication from a variety of medium. And I really appreciate all you did, and I, and I know I'm confident that the lessons learned, the best practices, all these experiences will now become part of the organization and won't just be put on the shelf. I mean, you found out what worked and what might not have worked as well as you'd hoped. And also piggybacking on him on your award, that sounds like the sort of thing the Florida League of Cities might like to know to put in their, their Quality Cities magazine that you were recognized for, that's well deserved and excellent job. Thank you.
We should have a communications department, people work on something, against the Florida League.
When I, when I look at that magazine, for all the municipalities, over 400 in the state, and I keep seeing Largo's doing this and Largo's doing that, it, it just speaks to the quality of the work that's done here.
The feedback was amazing from people thanking, coming to us and thanking us for what you all put in place. It was, it was the transparency and the openness and easy to find out what was going on, and the citizens knew that they were being taken care of and stuff. Thank you.
Personally, I had to wait for the Valepak mailer. That's just me.
I'd like to add, personally, I, I really appreciate, I think in the last, I don't know, several years, the visual, the aesthetics of everything that's going out has reached another level, and that, that's very impressive. You don't see that from other, other cities in this county, probably period, but I don't know.
Yeah, not in this county.
I, I wanted to also note that, just today, somebody asked a question on Facebook or somewhere, on some platform, and there was three different residents that I didn't know them, so, you know, I don't know who they were, but they were sharing, like, the, the exact things that we're putting out there as answers, where in the past, they would, you know, give some erroneous information that's not correct, so, so, you know, it's really, really working very well, and it's, it's great when I see just regular residents sharing what we're putting out there as, as the correct and accurate information on things that are happening here in Largo, so that's cool to see. And another, another thing is that it seems as if, and I think this is the case, but it seems as if through your department, all of the departments in the city are sending unified messages, and they're, they're accurate, and we're getting the same signal from, from this department as we are from this department, and that's, it hasn't always been that way, so that's great to see too. Lastly, this isn't, I guess this is kind of a suggestion, I know that, that, you know, COVID hopefully is, is, it's kind of coming to an end, but hurricane season, it comes every year. So, so I think that it'd be, and I know that, that there's some stuff that's out there for hurricane season and preparedness, and, and I think it's, it's an ongoing challenge, and it will always be an ongoing challenge, to, to communicate to people that are in different. be an ongoing challenge, to communicate to people that are in different evacuation zones, people that are in mobile homes, people that need to plan ahead and maybe aren't doing so. So I'd like to kind of focus on that a little bit, reaching out to our residents in Largo to help them get ready for hurricane season, help them know what to expect when something does amount to something, and I think that's an opportunity for us moving forward as a city to help, for you guys to help us get in touch with people better, because you're obviously very, very good at it.
Absolutely, thank you.
I want to say, as the person that was helping to decipher all of the CDC information and then passing it to communications and engagement, this team was working around the clock. I mean, the amount of hours that they were putting in for the last year, the entire team was just insurmountable, and they were able to still get the information out timely and accurately, so thank you so much to your entire team. I really appreciate it.
Everyone has said most of what could be said, to thank you. But I think Commissioner Carroll used the word comforting. I was going to say that it was very reassuring to be on the weekly updates and to hear what numbers there were or where we were at, how things were going, and that's probably to what Assistant City Manager Maggie just said, was, you know, that that data was coming through very clearly from the various departments that it needed to be, and it was reassuring as opposed to maybe you turned on the news or some other outlet and it was, you know, it could be overwhelming hour after hour we sat through that. So I really appreciated being able to, you know, just join in there, too, and listen and get those messages and still be connected as much as everybody probably did. Employees, you know, felt that, too, so that was really great. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have some that are joined via Zoom or Facebook, I hope, anyway. If not, I will definitely pass along all of those wonderful messages.
I think one of the great benefits that came out of that, there were so many, but one of the benefits that really caught my attention was that there was such an increase in engagement with the city through these various, you know, resources, you know, 448%, which means that there are more residents, more citizens of Largo who are now familiar with this and will be using this as a resource for information, and will be able to communicate with them so much more effectively. I think that's a wonderful outcome.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Those, sorry, those people are still getting the weekly emails that we're sending out from the city manager and...
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, just having that information in of itself, just that 448% increase and that information that's going out every single week, even though luckily we are on the other side of this, hopefully, there's great information that goes out now. I mean, that's just another great tool that, you know, you guys are sending out every week, so, yeah, I think.
Like the goods that came from the...
Right, exactly.
That should only grow exponentially as those people share their...
Yeah, right, absolutely.
And I kind of was going to ask the Vice Mayor, is you continue that message getting out there. I mean, everybody has one of these days.
Most of us.
Most, a good portion of us have these days and follow it. So I think it created a transparency that people were looking for at a time of need, so I really appreciate your staff and the entire city for what you all did. And I think tying it into, you know, we've had a council meeting, commission meetings, we've had the staff come do, get, you know, do a presentation and show their award, if that's what you've gotten. I would love to have that proudly showed to our citizens at a commission meeting, and at the same time, maybe something written up for the B or the same P times to get it out there. I know sometimes the media kind of, there's a lot of stories there and things get buried, but I think this is a positive thing that shows transparency in our community. They may have already did that and I missed it.
Oh, yeah, no, we haven't.
So, okay.
Yeah, we wanted to do this first and then, yeah.
I think that's, it shines great on our city, and the Vice Mayor said, you know, some places weren't able to catch up as quick, and you all did an awesome job to get out there. And I follow a lot of the Largo groups that people have created or that are out there, and they were, like the mayor was saying, they are sharing your stuff to get it out there. So I think that engagement and continuing that engagement is a great opportunity in growing Largo, and what this commission has talked about is getting information out to the citizens as best as we can. I think way above what any place could ask for, so I really, on top of my heart, I really appreciate it. And thinking outside the box of doing it and livestreaming some of that stuff, you know, I would have never really thought of that stuff, so, thank you so much.
You know, another factor that you've covered, and it's great about the citizens and getting the information out, but just from a management perspective, getting the same message to the team members and the employees without having them have to call in and ask their supervisor, do I come in today, or, you know, whatever the question may be, I mean, that had to really make it more streamlined for management or leadership around here.
It's still a little weird when I get a phone call that starts with my own voice talking to me.
Yeah. Eerie. Well, yeah, yeah, it is a little weird. That's not Woody's number.
Thank you all for everything. We look forward to even more great work in the future.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Are there any board or committee reports from anybody on the commission, from any committee outside of here?
I don't have anything for the PSTA. We have a meeting coming up beginning of next month, but for Suncoast League of Cities, the executive team has a meeting on the 17th where we're going to discuss the strategic meeting, our annual strategic meeting. Right now, tentatively, it's scheduled for the 31st of July here in Largo at the Largo Library. It's going to be a hybrid, so if you are more comfortable calling in or zooming in, that's an option, or you can, if any of you guys would like to attend, you can attend live. Carson, what time is it?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty to eleven thirty? There, that's, I'm glad you came down, man, because I was thinking about the... So it's eight thirty to eleven thirty on July 31st, and it should be in the Jenkins Room, one of the Jenkins Rooms over in the library. More to come after our exec meeting this coming Saturday, so definitely be on the lookout for that.
And that's a Saturday?
That is a Saturday, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
That's all right.
That's all I have.
And the other reports?
Just, with Ford pronounced, we have our meeting tomorrow, but I would like to ask if the commission would be interested, it's been a while since WITS come to talk about some of the current transportation and land issues that have come up. Would the commission be interested in having the director or someone from the staff come to present about current transportation modes and also about the Gateway area? Yes?
Maybe an update on West Bay.
In West Bay, yes. Okay.
To add on to that, I know we haven't had any conversation with Brad Miller in a while from PSTA. Would there be any interest in just kind of seeing where we are transportation-wise or, you know, at a work session or something like that?
Maybe we could do a joint one together with both of them.
I don't care. Yeah, I mean, that's, whatever works, if you guys are interested.
Yeah, I think both together would be good.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Along those lines, I've seen, I've had a couple people call me about bus stops along Clearwater Largo Road that are in awful condition, both trash and stuff.
Really?
Yeah, just in the last couple days. I hadn't talked to Henry about it yet, but, might be, I don't, I don't know exactly the ins and outs of who maintains the bus stops, because I know some of them, the city put the bus stops in.
Right.
I think PSTA still empties those cans and...
I believe they do.
Deals with the maintenance of the bus stop.
They should still maintain them.
Okay, so, we'll start that conversation maybe again.
Okay, well, if you need anything from me, let me know.
Okay. Any other reports from any of the committees? All right, moving on, Commissioner Carroll, anything else?
The business showcase, I want to make sure everybody knows where I was coming from on those questions about law enforcement, given the proximity of that operation to places like Safe Harbor, and I'm sure, I was relieved to know that they'd done the groundwork to make sure that we weren't going to have behavior issues out there. I, from my earlier days, remember issues in Clearwater. Clearwater had quite a problem. It was a different time and a different place, but, so hopefully, this is not going to be an issue for us. I would say thank you to everyone who participated in the work session we had on the budget. Did you get a chance to look at it? It was a very interactive discussion. The Finance Advisory Board was most impressed and made multiple comments about the depth of the organization and the succession planning and having a variety of people present. It was, I thought, well done. And Vice Mayor asked admin to make sure there's adequate funding in the legislative account to cover any Suncoast League of City presidential duties that you may encounter. As we come out of this pandemic and travel and training starts to come up again for, and opportunities for us as elected officials to do things, so we did discuss that, but it was a very nice discussion with the Finance Advisory Board and our staff, as usual, that is proud, so. And the other thing, I guess we'll work out transportation for Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm vice chair on that committee. I don't think I have to go early, but get out of Tampa before traffic gets...
Makes sense to leave early.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith? Vice Mayor Robinson?
No, I just wanted to, you know, apologize for not being at the budget work session last Friday. I had a, not an emergency, but I was called to work down in Miami last minute, so, you know, they pay my bills, so I had to go. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
I want to let everybody know that there will be COVID vaccine, free COVID vaccine at the Largo Public Library on Thursday from 10:00 to 2:00. Anybody can show up and have two different types of vaccine that will be available. That's day after tomorrow, Thursday, from 10:00 to 2:00, and as I, as was mentioned tonight, you know, we are kind of coming out, you know, at the tail end of this, but there is a variant out there that is highly contagious. Some sources say over 200 times more contagious than the original variant, and that it spreads in the body 1,000 times faster than the original variant, too. So it's there. Numbers are increasing. Positivity rate is increasing, whereas at one point, Pinellas County was down like 3%. The positivity rate is back up to 6% now. That's not gross numbers, but that's just at an increase in the positivity rate that's being attributed to the Delta variant. And if you haven't gotten a vaccine, I understand that there is some, you know, some thoughts about it. Speak to your medical professional, and please, please, because the people who are becoming infected now are people who have not been vaccinated, not people who have been vaccinated. So please take advantage of it. And with that public service message, thank you.
Thank you. Was that, that wasn't sponsored by anybody?
No, it wasn't sponsored by anybody. By the Largo Public Library.
Thank you. Commissioner Hulk?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Finger?
Just want to confirm, are we having our meeting next Tuesday to make up for Hurricane Week that we missed?
We have a scheduled meeting.
There's a regular meeting, right?
Regular meeting, right? The 20th?
Is there anything that was bumped forward to that that we need, that, from last meeting?
What we did was, we moved forward everything that was not an advertised public hearing, so the advertised public hearings will be on the next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, I'm next. I wanted to, I wanted to just, I wanted to commend the staff that worked to put together the budget. It was, I mean, I think it gets better. I hate to say that I enjoyed reading a budget, but I enjoyed reading the budget. It seems to be put together better every year, and I know that there's some efficiencies that we've seen with new programming and that type of stuff, but great job on the budget. I did have a long discussion with somebody from the Finance Advisory Board just today about the process on Friday, and they were very pleased with the process and very happy with the direction the city's been going in the last several years, so I wanted to share that, and I think that is all that I had.
Mayor, before we adjourn, can I, I called out Carson a minute ago, can, I just wanted to, to further, all of our four fans that are watching on TV, introduce Carson King, who's our new legislative aide for the commission and mayor, so we're very much looking forward to working with him, and all kinds of good stuff coming in the near future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and welcome, Carson.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure who to go to. I'm going to go to the Assistant City Manager, Maggie Pollard.
I don't have anything this evening.
Henry, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, good. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
I have three action items, sorry. Action items. Let's see, I got a request by Mayor Brown that communications and engagement staff focus on reaching out to residents about storm and emergency preparation, a request by Commissioner Smith that the Hermes Award be presented at a regular meeting and a press release distributed, and a request by Commissioner Smith and Vice Mayor Robinson that work session presentations by Forward Pinellas staff and PSTA staff be scheduled on current transportation issues, the status of the West Bay Drive project, and the Gateway project.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.